Are we live?
The broadcast of the regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustment will now begin.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this live broadcast of our virtual meeting today, July 9th, 2020. This meeting includes the remote participation of members is authorized under Minnesota Statute Section 13D.021 due to the declared local health pandemic. For the record, my name is Matt Perry and I'm Chair of the Zoning Board of Adjustment. I'll now call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll so that we may verify the presence of quorum.
Cooper.
Here.
Finlison.
Aye.
Hutchins. I'll come back to that. Johansson.
Aye.
O'Giba. Perry.
Here.
Sandberg.
Here.
We're going to check with Mr. O'Giba.
I'm not in the meeting. Did I, did you? Okay. Sorry, folks. I had a little technical difficulty there. Softly, are you with us?
Here.
Great. And Wang?
Here.
And one more time, Hutchins?
Yeah, I'm here.
Great. All right. I had some technical difficulty on my end. So that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight members present. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. With that, we will proceed to our agenda. We have quorum, so we can proceed to our agenda, a copy of which was posted for the public acts, posted for public access to the city's legislative information management system available at LIMS, L-I-M-S, Minneapolis, MN.gov. Is there a motion to approve this agenda?
Still moved. Sandberg?
Sir, second?
Second.
Cooper seconds. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper.
Aye.
Finlison.
Aye.
Hutchins.
Aye.
Johansson.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Sandberg.
Aye.
Softly.
Aye.
Wang.
Aye.
That's eight yays. Thank you.
That motion passes and the agenda is approved. I believe all the board members have seen a copy of the minutes from the June 25th, 2020 zoning board of adjustment meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Finlison.
Second. Sandberg?
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I'm seeing none, so will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper.
Aye.
Finlison.
Aye.
Hutchins.
Aye.
Johansson.
Upstain.
Perry.
Aye.
Sandberg.
Aye.
Softly.
Aye.
Wang.
Aye.
That's seven yays.
So with that, the motion passes. The minutes from the zoning board of adjustments, June 25th, 2020 meeting are approved. Ms. Brant, are there any petitions or communications?
Chair Perry, members of the board, no petitions or communications this evening.
Thank you. Let's review the agenda. I'll read the agenda number and the address of the project and state whether it's slated for consent or discussion. I'll just talk a minute about what those things are. Consent items are those items that will be passed without discussion by the board. We will be adhering to the staff recommendation found on your agenda under the items recommended motion section. Any applicable conditions will be listed in the same section. If you agree with this recommendation, including any applicable conditions, you need to do nothing and the board will pass it as recommended. Please check in with the staff member assigned to that item if you have questions following the decision. If you disagree with the recommendation, please indicate you'd like to speak again to that item when I ask and we'll put it on the discussion item, the discussion agenda, sorry. So what are discussion items? These are items which the board will take public testimony, deliberate on, and make a decision. After the public testimony has been heard for each particular discussion item, I will close the public hearing for that agenda item. Once I close the public hearing for an item, no additional public testimony will be taken, but staff may be asked to address board questions. After the public hearing for an item is closed, board members will then discuss and act on motions, and the chair only votes in the case of a tie. So let's go through the recommended disposition of the items on our land use requests list today. Agenda item number five is 1828 McKinley Street Northeast. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anybody on the line that wants to speak against this item? I'm hearing no one. Agenda item number six is 2208 Irving Avenue South. This is a discussion item. Agenda item number seven is 519 Oak Grove Street. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone to speak against this item? I'm hearing no one. Agenda item number eight is 41 Sheridan Avenue South. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone to speak against this item? I'm hearing no one. Agenda item number nine is 3527 47th Avenue South. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone who would like to speak against this item?
I have a concern against the...
Okay.
Oh, I have a concern?
You want, you want to speak against this item, sir?
I'd like to get a little more information on the lot line, the five foot. I'm concerned about the alley and I live right behind there and I'm just concerned about being able to enter and exit my driveway with the proposal to allow the new addition to be within seven feet of the lot line.
Okay, we'll pull this item so that we can get into that discussion. All right. So let's review the items on the agenda for consent. They are five, seven, and eight. Is there a motion to adopt these items on consent?
So moved. Finlison.
Second. Sandberg?
Finlison is moved and Sandberg is seconded. Is there any discussion? I'm seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper.
Aye.
Finlison.
Aye.
Hutchins.
Aye.
Johansson.
Aye.
Sandberg.
Aye.
Softly.
Aye.
Wang.
Aye.
That's seven yays.
So that motion passes, and what that means, if you are here for agenda items number five, seven, or eight, your land use requests are approved. Good luck with your projects. Now let's go to our discussion items. Item number six, and I believe that is Ms. Brant.
Good evening, Chair Perry, members of the board. Item number six is a variance application for 2208 Irving Avenue South. IT, there should be a presentation for this item. If you could pull that out, please. This is a mid-block parcel near Lake of the Isles, approximately 6,909 square feet in area that is currently vacant with an abandoned curb cut. As an aside, staff is recommending, if the board should move to approve this item, staff would recommend an application or a condition of approval that the curb cut be closed. The general area, the neighborhood, is quite varied. Lake of the Isles to the west, Hennepin Avenue to the east, quite a variety in terms of housing stock and scale of development. So the proposal at hand here is to construct a duplex, which is a permitted use, but the specifics of the, of the proposal do require two variances. One is to increase the height above 28 feet, and the other is to increase the garage size to greater than 10% of the lot area. The property is eligible for an administrative FAR increase, to increase above what we typically allow as an FAR of .5, but they will need to, so staff has analyzed this and the property does qualify for their proposed floor area ratio, but that application will need to be filed prior to permitting. I don't know if this is the correct presentation. Moving ahead, with regards to the, the height variance, the specific element in question is the rooftop deck, specifically the railing enclosing the rooftop deck. If the property were outside of the Shoreland Overlay District, this would be exempt from the height calculation. However, the State Department of Natural Resources does have stricter rules that cities must abide by in proximity to protected waters, in this case, Lake of the Isles. So because the property is in the Shoreland Overlay District, does not qualify for any sort of exemptions that would normally be excluded from, from the height calculation. Staff finds that there are not practical difficulties on the site related to this specific request. The lot is overall flat, very standard grade change in terms of what we typically see in the, in the city of Minneapolis. So staff finds that there are not practical difficulties with relation to this request. The proposal does meet the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The, the deck is set back from the front and rear facade of the house, and as such will not be visible from the public right-of-way or from the protected water, which does meet the intent of the DNR regulations with stricter height requirements in the Shoreland Overlay District. The proposal will not alter the essential character of the locality or be injurious to the use or enjoyment of neighboring properties and will not present a detriment to health, safety, or welfare. With regards to the garage variance, properties are allowed a standard 676 square feet of space devoted to accessory structures for parking. This can be increased to 10% of the lot area, not to exceed 1,000 square feet, where that is, where the lot area is greater than, where 10% of the lot area would be greater than 676 square feet. The subject property would be allowed 690 square feet of garage space under the ordinance as written. Their proposal is for 854 square feet, which does exceed that 10% of the lot area. Staff finds that there are not practical difficulties that are unique to the property and are not economic in nature that relate to this request. The proposal is not in keeping with the spirit or intent of the ordinance, which is to limit the overall size of garages on parcels to preserve open space. Staff finds that the request is not reasonable. We see quite a few two-unit dwellings getting built on lots of similar sizes that do not request this variance that are able to work within the ordinance with regards to their garage size. Staff finds that the proposal will not alter the essential character of the locality or be injurious to the use or enjoyment of this property or neighboring properties, will not present a detriment to health, safety, or welfare. Both variances meet the required findings for development in the Shoreland Overlay District, erosion control measures, view from the water, and generation of watercraft. Given that neither of these variances has met all three findings, staff does recommend that the board deny the applications, and I'm available for questions.
Thanks for that presentation, Ms. Brant. Are there questions of staff? I'm seeing none. So let's open the public hearing. Would people on the line like to speak? Would the applicant like to speak? And you'll have to do star six to be heard.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Gabriel Keller. I'm with the principal of Peterson Keller Architecture. Do you need me to state my address and so forth?
Yeah, if you, if you could, please.
Yeah. Home address is 1526 West 25th Street in Minneapolis, 55405.
Thanks.
And we represent the, the client here, and I've been working on this project for some time. And I believe I did send in a presentation, which I think may have been up before initially. I don't know if we can have that on the screen. I think that's Ms. Brant's presentation, but we have one that we uploaded.
That probably got included in our packet, so even though it's not appearing...
I'll speak to that. That sounds good.
Yeah, even though it's not appearing on the screen, it would be something that the board members would have reviewed.
Okay, thank you. So I'll just go through kind of my thoughts on this and then take any questions. I think that, you know, these, these developments for the duplexes obviously is something that the 2040 plan has encouraged and will be open questions for you and the city moving forward. This is a location that would have allowed it before, as this is in a row of duplexes and triplexes and quads along Irving Avenue and East Isles. And I've seen, you know, the 2040 plan is really looking to address how do we increase density in a sensible way within our neighborhoods, and where do we do it, and how do we do it, and how do we locate and find those most appropriate spots to do it in the most sensitive way? And this is a location that, that we do believe is, is ideal for it, although it does, of course, require the, you know, variance that we're requesting. Why is this a good location? As I mentioned, this is on a thoroughfare, which I do live on myself, of Irving Avenue through East Isles, and that is reflected in the surrounding architecture and the vocabulary in our presentation packet. There's a number of, and maybe you could just go through the presentation packet, whoever's controlling that, just in general, I'll just talk. But there's, there's quite a few duplexes, triplexes, larger apartment buildings that are, that are along Irving Avenue. And in fact, this one was one, there was a duplex that was located here, and a prior property owner took it down and then unfortunately passed away before the project was then developed. And so it sat there for some time as, as people evaluated what to do with it. And it's a location that will either have a single-family home or will have a duplex on it. And I think that this is one of the central questions that is unanswered as of yet, is how do we increase density specifically within the neighborhood such as this that have higher property values? Because they would definitely support single-family homes, and if we are going to encourage or allow duplexes or triplexes, then we need to allow parking that's going to be adequate for those. And indeed, this is an area surrounding that already has parking to provide it for most of these properties. So you do see larger carriage houses or garages that exceed those minimums, or excuse me, maximums on surrounding properties. So this is something that over time, over history, even when the code was different, it was being supported, that families have two cars. And the question is, are we going to have them park in the street? Are we going to have them park in the garage? I think that, I disagree respectfully with, with staff and their interpretation. I, I think that the intent of the code, to me, has always been, and justly so, is to limit the size and scale of garages. And, and that's absolutely important. We, we never want houses attached to garage, garages, or have garages seem overpowering in any way. We actually initially had a proposal that didn't come before you, but that had a tuck under here utilizing that access off Irving and then also the access off the alleyway in order to provide underground parking that was not supported by the staff as well because of that curb cut. So with a pushback there, we revised it in order to try to provide that, that needed parking, that would not be on-street parking through the back. This is something that the neighborhood, when we've been to the neighborhood a number of times, we do have their support, and it's a huge priority for them to have off-street parking. And I think that comes back to a lot of the questions of the 2040 plan was how, how is this increased density going to be supported and, and received and implemented in different ways within different communities? I'm sorry? Oh, I thought there was a question. And I think that this is an example of one where the neighborhood has supported, supported it. And, but their primary reason why they really like the development is because it does provide off-street parking. And I, the, the scale, you know, we're, we're under the, the maximum FAR here, so we could have a larger building, but even because they're attached, these garages are counted within the overall FAR and we're under what that limitation is. So we're not increasing the size or asking for FAR variance beyond what we'd be allowed because of it. And we do have that, that administrative bonus because there's all of these series of, of larger duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes along, along this area. Regarding the height, I think that's, you know, that's one. We've worked on a number of projects over the years where there is this roof access. And one of the reasons why I like it as a designer is because it allows us to justify green roofs. It's always a hard sell to our clients because it's something, you have it on that, that upper, those upper roofs, you can't see it, and it's a huge investment for things that people can't see. Having access up there is a way to, to allow people to enjoy it and understand that as a, as a cost that, that has something besides just environmental benefit. There's many, many projects, we have some images here of some that do have that access that are within the Shoreland Overlay. It's something that the interpretation or implementation of, of that code seems to have changed over the years in terms of what's allowed and what's not without a height variance. And with a flat roof, it's, it's more challenging. So we're well below the height of these adjacent homes. We don't, they're not tall enough, the way height's measured, to qualify for administrative exemption to go higher, but we are less massive than those surrounding homes. And indeed, the top of this railing, which we, which were designed to be all glass, is below those, those surrounding ones. So I think the challenge here for staff and, you know, the challenge for us is to understand why is this a practical difficulty, not why is it reasonable, because you can't see it and it doesn't have an impact on the, on the lake, and it's below what those surrounding structures are. So it, you know, and I think that this is something we've run into before, where there's a challenge of, of how to create this access for structures that are, that are modern, that don't have gable roofs. And so this is something we've been, I don't know if before you, but before other boards in the city with other properties that, that requesting those variances or CUPs for, for that purpose. So I, I'd leave it open for any questions, but those were kind of the points that I, that I wanted to, to make.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Keller. I will say, maybe a question to kick it off is that it sounds like you are aware of the findings that we must find for in order to grant variances, and one of them is that there's something unique about the property that is not economic in nature, that creates a hardship, where the code has created a hardship. And I'm wondering if you could expand on that for, for either one of the variances. And, and the code...
Yeah.
The code being the code is not, can't, can't be a hardship.
Yes, I, I understand. I think this is a conversation we've, we've had maybe before, Mr. Perry. I, I think it's, you know, and this is something that before I just answered that, I think it's something that is, we do mostly residential work as a firm, we do do some commercial work, and there's definitely a different attitude on commercial projects, rightly or wrongly, in terms of how, how that code is interpreted and, and when, you know, I think, looking at the garages specifically, you know, I look at this, at this, it's, it's not just, first, does it have a practical difficulty, period, but does reasonable development of this property create a practical difficulty? Is it practically difficult to create a reasonable project? And I think in this case, when we're looking at a duplex in order to provide the parking that's needed, and, and this is the same way as if you had a, you know, we have a lot with some really significant front setback that makes it, could you put a miniature house there? Yes, you could. But it's definitely been something that, that has been seen as a practical difficulty to do a reasonable development in order to go into a front setback when that is otherwise significant or limits some type of reasonable development there. And so I think in the, in the case of a duplex, which is supported by both its underlying zoning and now the new 2040 plan, which has changed all of them, it's practically difficult to do that. And I think Ms. Brant referenced other projects, and I think those other projects that haven't needed that are either in larger lots or not in these neighborhoods. And, and again, in order to do it, not for economic reasons, but just for practical reasons, to put a duplex there, it requires that. The, so that's how I would answer that on, on the first one. And, and the second one, I was alluding to it, which is that there is a practical difficulty in, in a flat-roofed structure. And I would try to differentiate that from just the code is what the code is, but that putting that on and accessing that structure is, is a challenge. And it's certainly a challenge that's been recognized on many prior occasions with, with developments that are either taller or noticeable from the lake than, than what ours is.
Okay, thank you. We have at least one question for you, Mr. Softly.
Thank you, Chair Perry. And Mr. Keller, thank you very much for the presentation. Similar to Chair Perry, I'm still searching for the practical difficulty that you're trying to articulate. And I know we, you spoke generally about flat roofs being a challenge, but if you can expand a little bit more on what exactly it's, is a concrete practical difficulty, I know I would appreciate it, and I think the rest of the board would appreciate it. As far as a concrete question for you, I'm curious, what happens to your project, the current design, I should say, if you modified the existing garage space to comply with the requirement?
There would need to be a single-family home in the lot. There's not a duplex here that's going to be built that doesn't have allowance for four cars. So in terms of that, that's clearly what would happen, that it will be a single-family home. The, the property owner's not, not here, but I'm sure he would agree with that, just in terms of, we look at this in every which way, and, you know, of course, you can't, no matter what we do, we can't provide that, that parking. And I don't think duplexes can be, can be sold here without that. And you, just the cost, with the cost of construction, and I know economic considerations can't be the only reason, but with the cost of construction and the cost of land on this neighborhood, you can't justify something that's at a lower price point because it just can't be built and, and sold within that. And that's why I think there's these unique challenges for, for these projects within these higher value, property value neighborhoods, Lindenhills and here before that. In terms of the, what I was specifically referring to, there is, and I'm sorry that the technology challenge here of not being able to control the presentation, but in your packet, you'll see an image that shows a gable roof kind of dotted in, in the front elevation with, with the railings. And that's alluding to any gable roof structure... And that's alluding to any gable roof structure can go up higher than the 28 feet. So you can design in a half-story above that may be over portions of it that allows you to go out. And in that, in those cases, the railing has not been counted by, as a height of a structure. It's been simply the midpoint and the peak of that roof. When we're going to a flat roof, the railing is now being counted within that height. So that's not something unique to the site, it's something that is unique to a design of any flat-roofed, flat-roofed structure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Keller. One quick follow-up question. The railing, is that required by building code?
It is.
Okay, thank you so much.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Keller? I'm seeing none. Are there any?
Just, Mr. Perry.
Yes, sir.
I mean, just last to reiterate this, is I think that this is something that is, this is this question, I know that's not just your body and myself that are considering this across the city, but I think that this is, this is one that is important because I think personally that increased density in a sensitive way is a positive thing for us as a city. And I think that shouldn't just happen in neighborhoods with lower property values. And I think that's something that should happen in my neighborhood as well, and just how do we do that? And this is the type of things that is required in order for that to happen. And this is definitely a spot, it's had a duplex for 100 years, 120 years. It's surrounded by other duplexes and triplexes. But this is what's required to do that. That's all, thank you.
Thanks for that comment. I will add that the 2040 Plan, regardless of what one thinks of it, really de-emphasizes the use of automobiles. So there is a call for increased density while there is at the same time a de-emphasizing of automobiles. So it has, there's actually two components to it. And I am familiar with the market, so I understand where you're coming from.
And our neighbors too. I think that's the question, is how supported can it be? And if so, how does it? And I think that the neighborhood's supportive of this, typically they would indicate they have no objection, but actually, in both instances, they've enthusiastically supported it and recommended it. And I think that's a reflection of why their feedback to council and others in terms of where they see the values lie, at least in this neighborhood.
Sure.
I understand and agree with what you said in terms of the intent of the 2040 Plan.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application who's on the line? I don't think we have anybody else on the line who's here to speak in favor of the application or to speak to the application at all. So is there anyone here to speak against it? And you'd press R6 on your phone if you want to speak against this particular item. I'm hearing no one, so let's close the public hearing, board comment. Mr. Sandberg?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This project does not seem to me to be an example of what the ordinance are set up to try and regulate from a number of standpoints. For example, for the height variance, I understand the finding of staff that you can't use the ordinance itself as a practical difficulty, but the purpose of the ordinance is to minimize the impact of the appearance of a structure from either the protected shoreline, the protected body of water, or the right-of-way in front of the house. And in this case, the staff found that neither of those things occur. So if I were looking for a finding of uniqueness of this property, it might be the fact that it's far enough away from the protected water and this, where, for which this design has no impact on, you know, on the ordinance itself. I think with respect to the, also the garages and the square parking footage, I think if you look at, and looking at these plans, I see there are five bedrooms associated with this plan. And I think it's unreasonable to expect a five-bedroom structure to get by with two off-street parking spaces, which is essentially what it would be limited to. So I think it's reasonable to expect for a structure this size, and the size is not a variance, but the parking area is the variance, to have four parking spaces. And I would say if I was looking for a practical difficulty with regard to parking, it would be the fact that this property is close to the, close to the lake and park area that a lot of non-neighborhood people use, and it's close to the Hennepin Avenue Business District, which a lot of non-neighborhood people use, as well as it being a thoroughfare as the applicant mentioned. So I think there is a practical difficulty for parking with this particular property. So I'd like to hear from other board members, but I'm inclined to support the applicant in this case.
Thanks for those comments, Mr. Sandberg. Does anyone else would like to comment?
John Finlayson.
Yes, sir.
It's my general feeling that this is new construction and they can follow the ordinances. It's a clean slate. Again, I'd like to hear further comment from other board members.
Thank you, Mr. Finlayson. Mr. Hutchins?
Yeah, I tend to agree with Mr. Finlayson on this one. It doesn't feel like with new construction, there is the need for a variance for parking. I know it's near a lot of public-use spaces, but you think about all the buildings downtown, you think about all the apartment buildings we have all over the city, don't have two parking spaces per dwelling. That, to me, is not a practical difficulty when you're building a brand-new building. So I would veer with the city on this one, to be honest.
Thanks for those comments. Mr. Softley?
Thank you, Mr. Perry. I'm in favor of supporting Mr. Sandberg's arguments. I think he articulated the practical difficulty and the reasonableness for both variances in a really effective way. That has my support, that's how I'd vote.
Thanks for those comments. Ms. Cooper?
I also agree with Sandberg, but I struggle with this idea that the only way to get a new duplex on the site is by building two garages for four cars. So that makes me think that the idea is to build duplexes but not have all the parking that comes with duplexes, which I think two cars per household, say if there's, you know, two people living in each duplex, that, one can make an argument for that, whether or not it's realistic that a duplex would only need two cars and therefore only one of those garage spaces. But at the same time, I feel like the garage itself is only 100 feet or so larger than what it's supposed to be. And I don't, that doesn't bother me as much as being forced to use street parking and struggling to do so and that impacting the businesses and neighborhoods in the previous statements. So I would also be in favor of granting the variances.
Thanks for those comments, Ms. Cooper. Any other comments? Mr. Sandberg?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one other point that I observed in this application, and that was that the parking structure is not a standalone parking structure, which I think the ordinance is trying to alleviate in city lots. It's really integrated into the living space. And so I think it's really part of the, part of one structure. And if that, if those parking areas were not used for parking, they could be used for living space with the same amount of building mass that is permitted. So I think it's not adding to the building mass, and it's taking at least two cars off the street. So again, I'm in favor of the applicant.
All right, thank you. Is anyone else who'd like to comment? Seeing no one, I would entertain a motion. Someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, this is Sandberg. I'll make a motion to support the, both variances with the, I think I stated some findings that staff could use. I think in addition to that, staff requested that a requirement to remove that the curb cut be part of our conditions.
Okay, there's a motion with a condition on it. Is there a second?
I second.
It is seconded by two people, so we have a second on that. Is there any further discussion?
Before we vote, could we just clarify for the motion that what was the, for the record, that the curb cut be closed or left open, just so that it's clear?
Oh, I think Mr. Sandberg is saying that the curb cut be closed as recommended by staff.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper?
Aye.
Finlayson?
No.
Hutchins?
Nay.
Johansson?
Aye.
Sandberg?
Aye.
Softley?
Aye.
Wang?
Aye.
That's five yay, two nay.
So that motion passes. Mr. Keller, your land use applications are approved. Good luck with your project. Let's move on now to item number nine. Ms. Brandt, you're back up. And I think since you heard a little bit about what, since the item was on consent and you heard a little bit about what the person calling in was concerned about, maybe you could focus on that area.
Sure.
Rather than going through the whole presentation.
Sure. Item number nine is a variance request for 352747 Avenue South, which is an irregular lot in the Howe neighborhood, approximately 7,500 square feet, close to the Mississippi River. And their proposal is to construct a two-story rear addition with an attached garage and a carport on the main level and then a living space above. Side yard setback is determined by the width of the lot at the district front yard setback. So in this particular case, that would be 25 feet back from the front lot line is where we take the width measurement for the purpose of determining the side yard setback. At that point, this property is 90 feet wide, which results in side yard setback of 10 feet. The north side is taking advantage of provision in the ordinance, which allows non-conforming, existing non-conforming setbacks to expand along that plane. But the south side, along that public alley, is where the variance is requested. You can move on to, yep, that's fine. Staff finds that practical difficulties do exist. I think you could back up a slide, please. The plating of the lot is unique due to the angled alleyway. You can see here, the blue triangle kind of outlines where they would be able to build without the variance. So you can see towards the, towards the rear, towards the right on the screen, just a small piece of the garage encroaches into that setback. It's setback 7.8 feet from the property line, and then a portion of the carport, which is in dashed line, is within five feet of the public alley. So the alleys are, you know, plotted typically 12 to 14 feet wide. This one here is 14 feet. So the applicant is not going to be encouraging into the public alley. They're maintaining a five-foot setback, which is a fairly standard setback throughout, you know, most, the typical lot in Minneapolis. The irregular shape and the narrowing of the parcel towards the rear constitutes their practical difficulty. If you could advance the next slide, please. Staff finds that this does meet the spirit and intent of the ordinance. As I mentioned, their request is to vary the side yard down to five feet, which is the side yard setback that we see in the overwhelming majority of lots in the city of Minneapolis, some of which also have alleys along their interior sides. Five feet is also the standard requirement for the rear yard setback for properties which have an alley along the back. Staff also finds, I think you could advance a slide, please. Staff finds that the proposal will not alter the essential character of the locality, does not present a detriment to health, safety, or welfare. It is not injurious to the use or enjoyment of properties in the vicinity. Similar to the last one, this property is also in the shoreline overlay district. If you could advance a slide, please. And this proposal meets all of those standard shoreline overlay district findings. There doesn't present a danger of erosion, won't be visible from the river, and is not anticipated to generate any watercraft. So staff recommends that the board move to approve the application with the standard conditions of approval as listed in the staff report. And I am available for questions.
Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Brandt. Are there any questions by the board members of staff? I'm seeing none. So let's open the public hearing, and we have a few folks on the phone. I think the applicant may be Brad Stokes. Would you like to speak, Mr. Stokes? Star six gets you unmuted.
Yep, I'm here. This is Brad.
You don't need to speak, but you may if you want.
Okay, yes. I have really nothing. You know, thank you to Ms. Brandt and the staff and to this board for hearing our application. I think she did a very thoroughly, she captured exactly what we're trying to do in the spirit of our request. We're kind of hampered by a triangular lot where the code makes the measurement at the widest portion, and we're just requesting a setback that's in line with the rest of the neighborhood. And we tried to do it in line with the spirit of our neighbors and everyone around us and are just hoping that everybody approves. And thank you consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Mr. Stokes? I don't see any. The next person I see who's in the queue is Meg Forney. Star six to unmute yourself.
Sir, I don't know if you're referring to me. I'm the person that called in with a question.
There's a couple of people in front of you, sir.
I apologize.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Mr. Kimball, I think, is another person who's in queue. You'd press star six to unmute yourself. You'd press star six to unmute yourself?
Hello, this is Mr. Kimball. I am in favor.
You're speaking in favor of the application, sir?
That's correct.
Okay. Please proceed.
I'm the building contractor, and I just wanted to, you know, definitely point out again that the difficulties with the side setbacks would be, and then the intent and the spirit would be not to overwhelm the property, but reduce the overall appearance of the property with the addition and removal of the garage and kind of staying within as tight of the structures we can.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the application? Okay, I think Mr. Shu, you would like to, you have a question or would like to speak against it? If you could star six your phone? Please go, please go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having telephonic difficulties. This is Jeff Shea. I live at 3552 Edmund Boulevard, and I don't have an objection, more a question and clarification or several. I think my main question was just answered by the gentleman who spoke right before me, whose name I do apologize, I did not write down, but I want to confirm that the existing detached garage is in fact going to be torn down.
Is that true, Mr. Kimball?
Hi, Mr. Shea. Yes, this is Jordan Kimball. And yes, that is correct. The existing structure will be torn down and, and pulled out of there as long as the existing slab as well.
Okay. That's the primary focus of the concern. And then the secondary, and that garage is very tight, and there's a very small little driveway there. And when cars are parked in that driveway, and this is the predecessor owner, the cars have been parked in such a manner that they actually encroach onto, or very near encroach onto the alley and makes ingress and egress from, from our property very difficult. And, and I'm wondering, it appears that there is a larger driveway contemplated both for the carport and for the, the two-car garage that's being built, so that, what I'm looking for is confirmation that there's a large enough driveway that a car could be parked there, so it will not be encroaching on the alleyway as has been done in the past.
Yes, Mr. Shea, that's correct. The driveway will be large enough for at least a car to into the driveway. And the purpose of the carport was to also provide parking space off the alleyway and off the street, as well as a covered garage that would then conceal any of the owners, you know, another car, and then also trash cans and, and other things, you know, lawn mowers and such, you know, kind of hidden away from, from the neighborhood.
Excellent. That, like I said, that was my primary concern, is the existing garage and then the parking of vehicles on the driveway, so they are not on or encroaching on the, the alley. And if that's the case, then I have no further question, and I would have no objection.
Um, may I add something? This is the owner.
Sure.
Uh, yes, Mr. Shea, I'll come and speak to you about it personally, but just so you know, when the, when the garage is eliminated, the actual amount of, the space back there for driveway will actually be increased. So, you know, any cars parked there, we actually have more space. And on the structure of the garage portion will actually not come out any further to the south than the existing garage wall does. So in almost every way, it's going to be better than it was before from your perspective.
And I appreciate that, and that's what it looked like from the drawings. Like I said, I wasn't sure if the garage was coming out. I figured that was the case, and I apologize for not coming over and talking with you directly. I just saw the, the printed, or my wife sent me a picture of the printed thing, so that's why I'm calling in. I apologize not doing it face-to-face and having to do it under this forum, but I think it sounds great and wish you well with your, with your project.
Well, thank you, and the apologies are all mine. I should have come to you first. My apologies.
Nope, nope, none needed. We'll, we'll meet later and look forward to it.
Thank you.
Sounds like a happy ending. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I would like to get any board comment or motion.
This is Finlayson.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept staff's finding and go with the applicant and move on.
Second. This is Finlayson.
It's moved in second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper? Finlayson?
Aye.
Hutchins?
Aye.
Johansson?
Aye.
Sandberg?
Aye.
Softley?
Aye.
Wang?
Aye.
That's seven yays. Thank you.
That motion passes, and so the, the variance request is approved. Mr. Stokes, good luck with your project.
Thank you very much to everyone.
And with that, we have completed all the items on the agenda for this meeting. I'll ask members and staff if there are any other matters to come for this meeting. I'm seeing none. So if not, without an objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Our next meeting will be July 23, 2020. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.